Planning Commission meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And we'll start with roll call.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, so I guess before we get going any further, we're gonna have to do the election of officers. So, anybody has any suggestions, nominations? We'll...
I'd like to nominate Jim Johnson to be the Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Vice Chair.
I nominate Denny Ferraro to be Vice Chair of the Marquette Township Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay. Secretary, Selinda? She's the President's Secretary.
Bethany actually is.
Bethany's the Secretary?
Secretary.
Oh, okay.
I nominate Bethany Cody to be Secretary of Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Minutes from the previous meeting of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All but comment. Anyone wishing to comment right now can do so, or you can wait till the agenda item that you're here for, and do it at that time. See no one, I guess we'll move on to new business. Six A. Special use permit, public hearing number zero one one zero two four dash one. Proposed short-term rental land use to be located at twenty-four fifty-five Center Street in Marquette. Within the zone, urban residential district. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight three six zero zero four eight zero zero. Applicant is Carol Clay Panetta and Dennis Panetta, north one one seven nine WPA Road in Vulcan. Jason?
So, this property, as indicated, is in the urban residential district. It's a larger lot at one point four acres. We did notify all the neighbors within three hundred feet of the property. And as you heard from the Panettas at their previous meeting, that this won't be a permanent residence for them at this time. They're waiting for their kids to graduate high school before possibly relocating to the area. So, they did provide an updated and a correction of their warranty deed to reflect lots number six eight seven and six eight eight of Trobridge Park. So that was a glitch in the initial application, but that's been satisfied. And I believe they put their house numbers on the...
As well.
Staff has not received any correspondence on the proposed. And just for the edification of the public that's here, any of our residential zoning districts at this time allow a short-term rental to occur through a special use permit. This is a way that the township found, along with things like tiny homes and what have you, to make housing a little bit more affordable in the area. And some of these properties that, you know, have been passed on to family that people end up selling on because they don't want to pay taxes on them, maybe they'll allow them to retain that property in their family's name or in their name without having to sell it off. So, we haven't really had any problems with short-term rentals. It's kind of a double-edged sword, I suppose. But the township has approximately thirty of them at this time. And I know the Planning Commission at some points looking at potentially implementing a proximity parameter and then possibly capping the number of them. And that's something we'll be discussing along with the master plan update this year. So our master plan gets updated every five years, and that's something we'll be taking on this year. So, if you have any comments on that, please pay attention to the website. Any opportunities to come and provide your input from the public? So, along with that, if there's any questions of staff or of the Panettas, we'd be happy to answer them.
Anything written come in?
Nothing written, no calls.
Okay.
Unless there's any...I don't know if there's people here from the public yet. But, so there's two public hearings tonight. You'll have an opportunity to speak on the mineral extraction permit and then the short-term rental as well.
Would either of you like to add anything further to what you've already submitted to us?
Is there any more questions?
Anyone has any questions for them right now? Okay. Then we'll open up the public hearing at seven oh five. Anyone wishing to speak on this can come up to the podium and please state your name and address, please. And try to limit it to three minutes. And just so you know, if you're addressing any of us, we can't answer any questions. And you just have to address us and not the audience members. So, anyone wishing to speak can come up now.
I'll come. John LaHillier, twenty-five oh three Center Street. I guess I would not like to see this happen. I've...I live in Marquette. I have a camp in Altrain Township. They let them do that also there. And I've run into multiple problems with... It just doesn't seem like people respect the property as if you would own it. I get...I call them weekend warriors. They come down on the holiday weekends and they just do things that the normal residents don't do because mom and dad either pay for it. That was one of the things that happened is the parents paid for it. They sent the kids. Kids came with no supervision. Had fireworks flying across my front porch, different things like that. And I guess they just don't seem to respect the property if they don't own it and pay taxes on it. So, I just want to let you know that I'm within the three hundred yards or whatever it is. And, excuse me, I don't agree with it. So, that's my opinion on it. Just bad, bad things that have happened in other places. And I don't want to see that in my neighborhood. Born and raised in Trobridge Park. I purchased a house in Trobridge Park after I was raised in Trobridge Park. And I lived there, and it just changes, and I don't like it. I'd rather not see it.
Sir, may I ask you a question? Could you repeat your last name, please?
LaHillier, John.
LaHillier?
Yes.
Okay, and what is your address, please?
Twenty-five oh three, from two doors over. And I just don't think there's a supervision when there's people renting there. Who's responsible for the people that are in those houses? Any other questions from the board? Sorry, you guys can talk, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Can come forward and state your name and address, please.
Just a question, though?
I just...yeah, come up here.
Okay, my name is Erica Judy. And my question is, is there a difference between a long-term rental and a short-term rental in definition?
We'll go over that after the public hearing. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh eight. Jason, did you want to respond to anything right before we got any further?
Sure, so a short-term rental in Marquette Township is anything less than ninety days at a time. And that doesn't require a permit. So unlike the city, for instance, we don't have, if you rent your house out, we don't have anybody from the fire department coming in and inspecting. In this case, with a short-term rental, the parameters are that you have to have enough part... If you're approved, you have to have adequate parking for the amount of people that are planned to stay there. You have to get a fire inspection the first year, and then every two years subsequent to that. And you also have to get a township visitor's license. And to answer the gentleman's question, Mr. LaHillier, ultimately, the responsibility of the short-term rentals are that of the property owner. So, Altrain Township, I actually did zoning for them for a little while. And they're...it's a little wild in Wild West out there. And so I kind of relinquished that duty because they weren't enforcing things out there the way that they should be. Marquette Township's a lot different. And I'm not trying to justify, they'll have their own opportunity to justify theirs. But from Marquette Township's perspective, we haven't gotten a call from the Sheriff's Department. We haven't had any issues with any parties that we're aware of. And if there are, they can call me, the Sheriff's Department, the state police, or...and that all goes back to the property owner. A special use permit can be revoked as quickly as it was given. So if you're underperforming and the Sheriff's Department's there, you know, three or four times during the year, when the Planning Commission reviews their permits each year, they can say, you know, that this one's not performing. You know, we're gonna revoke it. So, that hasn't happened, but it certainly is able to happen. So, hopefully that addresses that question.
I didn't know there was another meeting on this. How many people do they plan on having in this house? What do you got set up to rent out to?
Yeah, I'll let the applicant respond.
Okay. Want to come up to the podium?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'm Carolyn Panetta. This is my husband Dennis. We bought the property.
Okay, could you address us, please?
Do I have to speak this way?
Yeah.
Two thousand. And we've just been...we live in the Norway Vulcan area down by Iron Mountain. And we come up maybe once a month, and we use the house for activities in Marquette or family gatherings, that kind of thing. And we've decided we are gonna retire here as our plan. We have two kids that are still in high school at this time. So, we are...what we want to do is the short-term rentals, as you described. And we want to reach out to the medical community, feeling that that would be a better base to pull from as far as people being responsible and so on. So, that would be traveling nurses, doctors, lab techs, those kind of people. And we also plan to continue coming up here and using the home. It is a four-bedroom, actually five, but one of them's more like an office. We would rent two to three of the bedrooms at a time. And we're gonna have a...because we live in Norway Vulcan, our plan is to have a, what you call it, property manager locally so that if things come up, you know, they can call someone immediately. And we also have a local Jim Ledford Tax and Accounting Office will be handling the financial aspect of the business. So, we've had a lot of repairs we've had to make at the house over since two thousand. It's...we put a lot of money into it. And so getting some income would really help us. And we hope to, like I said, provide some housing, needed housing for medical folks here. So, anything else?
Can you answer the question about how many people at a time would be staying?
Oh, so we're gonna rent out bedrooms, so two to three.
Two to three people at a time?
Yeah.
Ms. Panetta, I may ask you a question. Have you been in contact with any local management company yet? Have you...
We haven't found anyone yet. We're working with Jim Ledford and Jim Ledford's son, who works for Coldwell Banker. So we're trying to learn more about that. But that's our goal, is to have a local person.
And are you...in terms of renting this, are you gonna be renting it through like...
VRBO.
What's it called?
VRBO.
VRBO, Herbo or Airbnb?
Us.
Okay. All right, so they're gonna have to...you know, how are you gonna advertise this?
So there are two websites that I know of that are directly for medical people where they look when they're coming into the area and they need short-term housing. There's two of those. And also, I'd like to go to the hospital, you know, and talk to Human Resources or whoever's the correct person. I understand there's like a medical research company here in town. I don't remember the name right now, but I thought I'd approach them. But I was told they use short-term employees as well. So, that's our thought. And so we're looking at from April through September total. So ninety-day...oops, sorry, ninety-day rentals. Two, that's two terms of ninety-day rentals.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the special use permit for the short-term rental as described in item six eight.
Just one question for you. When do you think during the year we're gonna plan on putting a cap on these?
Well, that's up to you. I suspect that started to be discussed at our next meeting.
I'll second Dennis's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? I guess I'm kind of thinking like Bethany also in the Trobridge Park area, you're kind of getting maxed out, a lot of short-term rentals in that area. So I know we have that coming up here, but I think that's something that we have to really look at is for that area, what we're gonna do and have some kind of a formula for that.
This one's a little unique since they purchased the home. They're planning to still use the home, hopefully even long-term after their kids are done. It's not purchased just for short-term rental use as a business.
It's also on a good size lot, too. They're not right next to anybody.
Any further? Roll call vote then. Steve Hakinen?
Yes.
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 Jim Johnson's yes. Okay, you're all set? Thank you.
So either myself or Eric will be in touch with you. You may want to reach out to Mr. LaHillier and give him your cell number in case there's any issues. That would be a courtesy, that would be nice of them to do. Otherwise, we'll be in touch to get your inspection.
All right, moving on to six B, special use permit. Public hearing number zero one one zero two four dash two. Proposed extraction of earth products, land use. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight zero zero nine zero zero three zero zero. The applicant is James Storey, Market Mineral LLC, fifteen forty West Adams Street in Iron River. Jason?
I want to first of all start out by apologizing to all of the people that are out here right now. This project was actually heard in July of this year, okay? And it was because of a phone call that we received. We went back through and I asked my staff planner to show me the letters that were sent out to the three-hundred-foot neighbors, and they didn't go out. That's on me. I take full responsibility for it. But to make it right, the public hearing is happening again tonight, okay? Mr. Storey's here. If you have any questions of him, we'll go through the procedural process. But I wanted to extend my apology to you. I've been here for thirteen years. This is the first time it's ever happened. So I will ensure that we get all of your voices heard tonight and move forward, hopefully with some balance. So, extraction of earth products. It's basically gravel, sand. It could be for timber as well. But in this case, it's a gravel. So you know the area. We Energies used to have this area. It's a large tract of land. Not only the parcel that's in question here, but other parcels in the area. And I thought it was awfully strange that when you have a mineral extraction permit application, that nobody showed up to our meeting. I don't know, it just didn't cross my mind until at some point later. So again, I apologize. Mr. Storey would like to work this property here. This is the old Fly Ash Road, obviously five fifty. And I'm sure you residents are from this area over here, along with the Middletons, which are south. So this property's actually zone resource production, as is most of this. The only industrial-type property that we have in the township zone that way is actually south of the tracks, south of the Fly Ash Road. So although this property is one hundred and twenty-four acres, Mr. Storey's only looking at operating a seventeen-acre site here, which is this area. So in order for them to do that, you have a special use permit application. There's a lot of small print that you're not gonna be able to read on here. But basically, you have a project description, a general operating plan, the establishment of buffer yards, okay? And buffer yards, if you notice out by Lindbergh's and by Smith's, they're only sixty feet. This is way, way more than that because of the area that he's operating in. So you can see the sixty-foot mark outlined here. Although, that's not in play because he's only proposing to get into this area here along with the stormwater detention area.
Jason, when you say that area there, were you pointing to the bluish area in the very corner?
Yes, yes, this is...well, that's the stormwater area.
Okay, so it's just this looks like a human brain? That's the area he's gonna be...
Yeah, there's lots of topography in there. There's lots of rock.
But it's that... It's that cloud-looking thing, yeah?
Correct. So I imagine your neighbors, you started hearing things, feeling things, and one was wondering what was up. And I can completely understand that. So that's why we're having the public hearing again tonight. We can get questions answered and have a public discussion on it. So this is the area. If you've traveled down the Fly Ash Road, you can see Mr. Storey's put in a driveway. And it's actually kind of, you know, it's fairly hidden back there. There's a...you know, you can see the topo. You can see the outcrops that are there in the proposed quarry entrance, which is probably a little bit west of there.
Look at the train track.
That's right here, ma'am. And then if it was back on here, then it would be this curvature here. These are just surveys of the property. This is the western half of the property. This is the eastern half of the property. So backing up to what I was describing before. So this use is only a temporary use in the resource production district. And when we had the public hearing the last time, it's kind of interesting because the state of Michigan really favors being allowed to extract rock and minerals where it is. The things that the township has control over are things like noise, dust, vibration, et cetera. So we went through that. And if you don't mind, I will share with you how that vote went and just briefly let you know what the parameters that were imposed on Mr. Storey to operate this land use at the last meeting. So we recommended approval of the material submitted. But as this is a public hearing, any written or verbal comments that are submitted should be taken into consideration. If considered for approval by the Planning Commission, staff has included the following contingencies that were approved as part of the July twelfth, twenty twenty-three review. One, that the hours of operation, including hauling, blasting, and crushing, be limited to hours between eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday only, which is consistent with other extraction permits in the township. That the applicant shall secure a stormwater permit for the Marquette Township Public Works Department. The applicant shall secure any required permits from Marquette County Road Commission for road usage and driveway construction. The applicant shall secure a sediment control and soil erosion permit for the Marquette County Building Codes Department. Adequate dust control measures shall be implemented per state of Michigan requirements. And the reclamation plan shall be implemented within two years of ceasing operations. The ceasing of operations shall also be triggered by three hundred and sixty-five days of non-use or of the operation. And that the permit was valid for thirty years. So, if you looked at Lindbergh's pits and Smith's pits out on five fifty, they're right up to the road, they're right up to the property line. This is something that's different in a sense that it's not really close to any property line except for the southerly property line. And as Mr. Storey will probably discuss in a minute, that there's enough material in that area for a long time without expanding the gravel area or the mining operations. And if I believe, if I heard him right the first time, any expansion would actually go away from the residences up to the north, and it would be more over in this area. Is that right? Yep. So, as this is a public hearing, you know, we'd like to hear from you guys and do this over again.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, Jason.
Sure.
So, because there was this glitch, Mr. Storey relied on us to go ahead and start operations, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, were there any violations of the hours of operation?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. Did Mr. Storey secure a stormwater permit as needed, if it was needed?
I would have to check with Lenny. I don't see any...yeah, yeah, it's...I mean, it's a five thousand dollar permit, so I imagine he did.
Okay, so that condition was satisfied. Were the required permits from Marquette County Road Commission for road usage and driveway construction obtained?
Yes.
Did Mr. Storey secure a sediment control and soil erosion permit from the Marquette County Building Codes Department?
Yeah, I'm just asking the applicant. I don't have the answers to that.
Okay, so, all right.
We satisfied everything that was required at the current state.
Okay, well, Mr. Storey, why don't you come up to the podium and identify yourself for the record formally?
Jim Storey, Market Minerals LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Storey. Did you implement adequate dust control measures?
If it was needed, yes. It was required by MSHA, OSHA, or in the state. We have no crushing going on at the moment, so yes, we would satisfy that.
Okay, so you...
It was basically clearing, and then we blasted for the first two times we blasted.
Okay, but my question is more specific. Did you implement any dust control measures?
Yes.
You did?
It's implemented to control everything.
Okay. Thank you. And then can either Jason or you, Mr. Storey, show us like where this is in relation to five fifty? I still don't get where that...
I can take care of it, Jason, or did you want to get it?
Yeah, let's see, there it is. So, you want to point to the actual area?
So five fifty is right here, going north of the Big Bear.
Okay, okay.
Fly Ash Road, the county just opened it. They got all the drive rail up. And now it's open to the public.
Okay.
All the gaming on trails or everything are to the south of the Fly Ash Road.
Okay.
Which why we chose to go to the north of the Fly Ash Road to stay out of that, to allow the trails to be used in and out of Marquette, so we did not slow down. We didn't want to disrupt the trails.
Okay.
And do anything with that property, working with the nine oh six club, Lori Halsworth and everything else. We went up here to stay away from all that, even though there's sand and gravel in that area. Probably better than where we chose to go, but we just...I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, so can you kind of show us where this seventeen-acre piece?
It comes in, the road, access road comes in right here, which the township or the Marquette County Road Commission decided where they wanted it for the view to come in and out, for access in and out their road. And they gave us the parameters on what they needed for call verb, so we did all that.
And you're...so the entrance is...the entrance is off of the Fly Ash Road?
The entrance is off of the Fly Ash Road.
Okay.
Isn't that the power line?
The power line is right here. And then there's a power line right here that runs along the vertical.
Okay.
So we're actually to the north of the power line.
Where is...if you can show us, either you or Jason can show us, where's the nearest residence?
I believe right down here. I would believe that's where it's at. It's to the, would be to the straight south of it, essentially.
Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Middleton, who are here, had an industrial piece of property that was rezoned to resource production to accomplish your goal back in 2014?
14 or 15, yeah.
14 or 15, I was reading through the file, yeah. So essentially, they developed a home next to industrial land use and zoning, but they did rezone their property to allow for a single family residence to be there through a special use permit. That was done a while back. Anyway, that's beside the point, but yes, that, the Middletons are the closest as, as the crow flies.
Mr. Storey, so relying on the, the permit that was issued to you earlier this year, how many days of operation did you engage in?
The next day of the permit, we were moving equipment in to start-
Grubbing and-
Grubbing, tender clearing.
So-
We had about six months of, about four months probably of prep before we actually were able to start. And then that, securing contracts for other, for sale of material and everything else.
So when you, I'm not familiar with your business, but I just had to ask you a question. So when you're doing the actual extraction of this gravel, breaking up the stone and making the noise and making the dust, how many days did you engage in that?
They probably drilled for two days or, or two weeks, excuse me.
Okay.
Blasted, then another two weeks, and then they blasted. I think is what it was, two to three weeks in between. And that was the ascent of trying to bring the ground, bringing it to a level site to where you could operate on.
So you were, you were doing actual gravel extraction for approximately a six week period?
Essentially prep to go there, you had to clear the trees, you had to get a road access road in, you had to get everything in.
Okay.
So the actual gravel extraction has not begun yet. We fractured rock.
Okay.
Now we have to come in and, so now we have 50,000 or about 80,000 to 100,000 tons of material. Now we would process and sort it.
Okay, but you actually used dynamite to blast?
Yeah, or however, the blasting, third party blasting company.
Okay.
We have them come do it just because they're professionals.
And during that period of time, did you have any, did the police show up or anybody complain or anything like that?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay, are you aware of?
Yeah, we received a phone call from the Middletons.
Okay.
And that's what triggered this all.
I see, okay. All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thanks, Jim.
I guess you can start the public hearing. Okay, then we can open the public hearing at 7:33. Anyone wishing to come forward for, please come and state your name and address and try to limit it to about three minutes.
My name's Connie Middleton. I live at 277 County Road 550 with my husband, Jack. And this is my brother-in-law, Jack Perella. And the two of them own Dead River Storage, which is the commercial site that Jason was talking about earlier. We have a home, and I just want to tell you kind of when this first started, I happened to be in our orchard. We have a, we've developed a farm and an orchard. We don't have animals, but we have lots of agriculture just for our own use. And I was planting daffodils, and I heard this like beep, or it was like these three loud beeps, and then all of a sudden, this huge like noise, and I could, it was just like rocks coming down from the sky, dropping, I could hear it. And I, I was mortified. I'm like, what is that? You know, we had seen, we had seen lots of lights through our bedroom window before 8 o'clock. So they were not abiding by that. We thought they were just developing a road. We knew that that area was being developed. And so all of a sudden, this truck pulls up, and a man and a woman get out with helmets, and they come up, and they're like, and I'm like, can I help you? And they're like, oh, in fact, I have the gentleman's name. He gave me his card, Mike Gillis, the blasting supervisor. He said, oh, oh, you're home. We, no one was here yesterday. We were, we, we had a seismic machine here. And I'm, excuse me? Yes, we were, you know, just testing the vibrations and just to see how that was affecting you. And, you know, he said, it's very low, you don't have anything to worry about. And then he was actually the one that said that we needed to contact FA Industrial. That's all he told me, FA Industrial. Well, what, who is FA Industrial? So then I started doing some research and found out it was Frozen Acres. I'm not sure how you were involved with Frozen Acres. Yeah, I, a lot of noise, a lot of lights through our bedroom windows. Not happy about that at all, and not happy about it continuing. Not at all. They need to be more respectful and responsible, and, you know, we may be the only one that that's, is that close, but I'm sorry. We have our home there, and we never envisioned any of this ever happening. That's, I guess all I want to say, is there anything else that you want to say?
Well, you've got a, you're not very deaf, so I don't have-
Yeah, it's, I'd say, did you hear that? No, I did.
Could we address the question about how often you blast?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Excuse me, excuse me. If you could come up to the podium, please, and address us.
Yeah, I'm Jack Perella. I'm the 50% owner of Dead River Storage, which is right on that same property, basically. It doesn't affect me nearly as much as it does my brother-in-law and sister-in-law, but I'd like to know how often do you blast and what kind of notification do people get before you're going to blast? Do you know?
Sir, could you address us, please, and-
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, all right. Well, I'd just like to know how often the blasting will take place and what kind of notification that the homeowners around the area get. Okay?
Okay, we can answer that when the public hearing is over with.
Okay. I'd like to have one other question. Then once the blasting is done, I assume there's like grinders that break all the stuff up to gravel, and then how many loads might come out in a day or a week? That's my question, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jack Middleton. I reside at 277 County Road 550. I guess I'm somewhat optimistic. I think they're just starting, you know, they, the entrance to the property is right across from our, our place, and so there was a lot of activity, you know, at that point. And it did, you know, they were there pretty early in the morning, and those things, you know, do bother my wife considerably. But I think that if you address the situation that we would have a person to contact, you know, if we did have a concern, you know, calling Jason, you know, that's not his job. I mean, I think if we could have a person in the industry that, that we have a contact and, and share our concerns with, that would, that would resolve most of our, our concerns. And, and like I said, they, they just initiated the driveway and all that stuff right across from our house, so I'm sure they'll be working back in the, in the pit, and, you know, it'll probably be a non-issue, so I'm optimistic. I'm not against, you know, the extraction or that, but like, like my brother-in-law said, that we, we would be, want to be notified, you know, when they were going to blast and, you know, when there was going to be a significant noise, like my, my wife witnessed. So I guess I don't have any other concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patrick Altos. I live at 331 County Road 550, and I noticed in looking around at the properties that FA Frozen Acres had purchased, there's quite a few in there. And with the applicant here stating he's only doing that little area, I'm kind of concerned that it's going to be a lot, sorry, bigger at some point, given that he's got, or the property owners have quite a bit of a property purchased up behind where now currently the power lines are accessing. So my question is just more or less, why is there so much property there purchased if it's only going to be such a small thing and not blow up into something a lot bigger?
My name is Erica Judy, and I'm a, I'm located, or my property is located across from the other gravel pits on the way to Sugarloaf off Old Saloon Trail, bedding up against a big stretch of 550. What are the long-term plans to, after they've extracted a lot of things, are they just going to leave a gravel pit, or are they going to try to make it look okay for the, because I, I feel that the whole stretch from Sugarloaf on is, is just a gem of CUP, you know, for tourists and people outdoors. And I don't like to see it just blasted and left in a bad way for the future. So I'd like to know a plan.
My name is Neil Nickenin. I live at 111 Old Saloon Trail, north of 550. There's like 150 acre subdivision there with like seven residents living there. 400 foot deep wells. The blasting does shake everything. Depending on how the blasting is done, and I noticed the devil's in the details about blasting, because if you blast, like the mine blast, you'll have a drill rig, you'll fill it with fertilizer and then diesel fuel possibly, and you light it off, and you'll have residue from the blasting going into the groundwater. I noticed it's a third-party blasting, so to me, right away, that would tell me that they want to wash their hands of the after effects of how the blasting is done. There is a creek just north of that area. That map doesn't show them ponds there where it was dug out deeper than the water level, the water table, and then there's a creek that runs through that water table just north of where that proposed site is. So that would be a concern for the groundwater and the wells. And whenever you have basically a mining operation and these gravel pits, I don't know how far they're going to be expanded. Maybe I'll be dead and gone by the time they ruin the rest of that area. So when you have the trails, the hiking and biking trails, everybody that I know raves about how nice they are, and climbing Sugarloaf and the view from up there, I hope this doesn't turn into an eyesore. So when you climb Sugarloaf, you can look at a mining pit. That would not be very good for that area, and it devalues the properties. Even though I'm a little distance from this, just knowing that this can potentially be mined out, that the nice rock bluffs, I, I can see how you need to make some gravel. But it will definitely degrade your property values from around the surrounding area for putting, allowing all of that to go on. And the other thing, even though that access road is from that Fly Ash Road, you're, you're going to crush and make gravel. Where's that gravel hauled to? It's going to probably go up 550 up the Eagle Mine, so you're going by all that residential area with all the haul trucks. So even though these haul trucks come out of that ash road, they got to go someplace, and they're probably going to be going up through all the residential and up there. And you can count all the deer that are killed, because them, the trucks that go through there, they're lucky to slow down to 50 miles an hour, the, the big double tandem 180,000 pound trucks, they couldn't stop for anything if their life depended on it. But all that truck traffic is going up 550, and then there's a bike trail right alongside of it. So I just wanted to make them comments. And the wildlife up there is pretty spectacular. There used to be four, it might sound a little crazy, four barred owls that would talk to each other every night on the north side of 550. But the, the more blasting and the more noise, and I can expect some noise during the normal hours, but with all of that activity, it seems like they're disappearing, and I'm pretty sure they're going to be gone eventually, which is, I think, a shame. So thanks for your time, and that's my comments.
Okay, anyone else? Come back, sure.
I have a question. Is, is this permit going to be renewed every year or reviewed every year?
Okay, last call. Good. All right, close the public hearing at 7:48. And a lot of good comments, a lot of good questions. Thank you all for them. So it's all yours, Jason.
This is more consistent with a mining operation, public hearing, so appreciate you guys coming. I would ask the applicant to respond, come up to respond to some of the questions that were asked specifically about the notifications. Those are very important to neighbors, and usually it's a 24-hour notice, right?
Yes, generally, they, the blasters, when they come, when we know they're going to be, they come up, they went to your house, knocked on your door, they said they couldn't get a hold of anybody, nobody was home. They still set a seismic graph out there to, to know. I know, they said they didn't, that's what they're telling me.
They couldn't find a phone number for us?
We had no idea who the people, who neighbors are.
So we'll correct that. We'll correct if this-
That's going to be addressed.
Yep.
That will be addressed.
If I had it, I would have called you personally.
Okay.
So I'm Frozen Acres Farm, I own cattle and everything else too. FA Industrial, that is another company I have, Marquette Minerals. So they know me through that. They blast for 3M, they blast for people all over, all the major people that produce materials, is why we selected Midwest Drilling and Blasting. They're professionals at what they do, better than what I would do.
Well, they're very professional, and, you know, we appreciate it. And the seismic results at our house was very minimal, so.
And, and they went to the blast patterns they were talking about at the very first shot they did was a lot less. The second one, they even went less trying to accomplish. Essentially, we're trying to get a flat area for, with where we're at, where eventually we could do something with it later in life, whether we, you could put usable with, with the rock bluffs, you can't, the property is not usable. So it's too much. The bike trails and everything else will stay to the south, the rest of the property to the north to address that. I had the DNR out there- I had the DNR out there going through to look at, maybe putting in CFR to eliminate liability on me because everybody uses the property as their own. But they would not do that because they found 22 deer blinds on it, garbage, old cars and everybody encroachment, and I have that. So in order for me to do that, I need to go tear down everybody's stuff on the property. I know people used it, but to that extent, all the neighbors, I'd have to kick them off the property. And I didn't want to do that. I didn't want to go post it and say, "Stay off." We Energies, however they did it, was different. So we were taking that one and we were going to look at, going to CFR so everybody can use it. Also with the bike trails, that is key. I never cut that. I would, the trees are, it's a beautiful area. That's why I would not go there and cut the timber to the south, down by, right across the power lines where your house is, all through where the trail and the hiking trails go to. The timber is very, very big. Fire hazard scares me to death out there that they're going to, someone's going to go, because there's people camping on that property all over up on the rocks, fires. If it gets out and gets in those pines up there, it's going to burn the thing to nothing because it's all overgrown. But I have not cut them areas and I just decided we're going to stay in that little spot we have and try to go from there and not impact the areas. Why there's so much land there, we bought so much so we didn't impact the neighbors the least amount as possible. Because I wouldn't want that as a neighbor either. You know, in your backyard, right on a property line, 60 feet from somebody's property line, doing what we're doing. I mean, hours' operation, I know, I can look on the GPS when the guys were supposed to be there at 8 o'clock and when their vehicles got there. If they started a machine early, I don't believe so. But I will double-check and I will address it with them because they knew that they were supposed to start at 8 o'clock and they're driving two hours to get there. So they're not in a time chain.
I want to clarify something too, just to be clear. The motion was, you know, you can have people showing up to the job site at any time. I mean, you own the property. The recommendation was that no...
Condition.
Crushing or blasting would occur unless it's between 8 and 5, Monday through Friday.
That was a condition, not a recommendation.
A condition.
Yes, we have not crushed anything.
Understood, yeah. They haven't gotten that far yet.
But would have been, would have been the logging equipment clearing the trees, that would be there, the lights you're seeing, whatever it is, dozers, excavators, clearing to get to where we are currently right now. So there was a D7 dozer, 336 excavator, a skidster and a Tiger Cat Feller Buncher clearing trees. In that, we cleared 11 acres, I think is what we cleared. 10 to 11 acres only of the area where it's at.
Well, I'm sure that was just getting your road in there, so.
If the road goes in and then we're going to go to the back and we're going to go away from, essentially from your house.
That's fine.
Is the intentions.
Now, how many times are you intending to blast?
Oh, to blast. Realistically, I don't even think you'll see it once every two months in reality, if not longer. But I don't want to say for sure. It depends. If we're able to put 10 people to work and we're working and we're moving material here, you would need to blast more. But till then, I don't, I don't see that. I see that out, it'd be a tall task for me to get to that point. Would it be nice? Yes. But whether or not we can do that, I don't know.
Maybe three or four times, two or three, two to four times?
I believe that would be a realistic... So we did two shots and there's 80,000 tons of material there. So there's 80,000 tons of material processed. That would be two and a half months of processing material before we'd need to blast again. At a state with one crusher in there, going through making the different materials. So it's a very timely process.
You've already run the crusher?
We have not.
Okay, so we don't know what kind of noise that's going to be?
It, crusher will be, you'll...
You're going to hear it. And to the Middletons, and I know that there's other residents in the area, but I remember working with you back in '14 when you wanted to build this house in an industrial area. And to work with you, we had to rezone that property and definitely made you aware of potential implications of building a home there. Now, that's not to say that, you know, if Mr. Storey abides by, you know, the conditions that have been, that would be imposed here, things should go fairly well. I mean, it's not ideal, I get it. But the state of Michigan definitely favors mining operations being not where you think they should be. And we're only going to zone this area over here to remove rock because there might not be rock there. The state legislature has, and this is something I've been involved with planning now for about 20 years altogether, and it's one of those things that's kind of went back and forth. There's more rights to the township, now there's more rights to the gravel. And it's swayed back to the gravel producers because their lawyers are better and the laws have changed or what have you. But it definitely allows, you have to demonstrate, you know, what's the, I handed you that copy of the MCL, but there was a term in there basically that, you know, in order for a gravel operation to be denied, it had to be because of, you know, extensive potential damages. And if he abides by the conditions and the rules that are in place with the state of Michigan, he should be okay.
And it's going to be just eight to five is the crushing?
Those are very serious consequences.
Very serious consequences. That's legalese. I mean, that's, that's a lawyer's term that got written into a bill. And that puts a very difficult position for any planning commission to be in because it makes it very hard to deny an extraction permit.
How many trucks will we be running at any given time?
It's a loaded question, to be honest. It depends. We may not hardly move anything. I don't know. I'm investing hundreds of thousands of dollars hoping I'm going to sell material. I don't know if I'm going to be able to. I am trying. What's that?
You have a market now?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potentially. Besides of our own use up here on roads, projects and different stuff like that. So we would be selling to FA Industrial, which is roads, bridges, highways, water and sewer projects with excavating companies, what we do on that end. And then maintenance and repair at the mines and paper mills and stuff like that. So we hire union operators, mill rights and stuff like that. That's what we do and on that end. So now that's, having this up here, the other aggregate division allows us to be able to come here and bid projects in Marquette, be quite honest. If we don't have a source, we can't bid a project here because we're not competitive. If there's one supplier basically in the area and you're going to bid against him as a competitor, you're going to pay 10 times the amount of money for the materials so you're not competitive. So that's why we bought that property when it came up. When We Energies offered it, I bought it instantly and then figured it out after.
Yeah, I will say for the residents that are here that are adjacent to it, that property went, I mean, nobody really knew it was for sale. All of a sudden, we had a new owner. We were chasing down a new owner because we have trails in there, we have residents around. And all of the property right now is actually zoned resource production. But as the planning commission will be going through this master plan update this year and knowing that that property is there now and it's no longer in the hands of a, you know, a major utility company, the planning commission may decide to, you know, take some of that and maybe, not rezone it, but in the future land use map, maybe massage some of that to, maybe there's some areas for residential development, you know, that would obviously have to go through a public hearing process if it was ever rezoned. But the township, it happened so quickly and I think it was at the end of last year or the beginning of last year.
I don't remember exactly with...
But we really haven't had a chance to react to it from a land use standpoint. And so we're looking forward to doing that this year. And as, like I said, if there's opportunities, we hope to invite various sectors of the township to come and speak with us about what they would like to see in the future. You know, we hope that you would show up and express your opinions on things. If there is an opportunity that we can work with you at all or through the Marquette County Land Bank to get rid of some of the junk or blinds on the property so that you could put it in CFR so that it could be used by the general public and help you out, I think that's an effort that myself as a planner would be willing to assist you with because I think that benefits a lot of people.
What does CFR stand for, again?
Commercial Forest. So he would receive a tax break and then basically the public, much like what MTN's done, laissez-faire for 25 years of building trails on CFR land. But you can essentially hike, fish and trap, right?
Yeah, you can, you can walk. You can't bring in a four-wheeler or anything like that on the properties with that.
So I will say, and a lot of this stuff has behind the scenes, but when we first talked to Jim, Mr. Storey here, you know, we had a major concern about the trail system because that's MTN's main vein basically coming through the north. He's been great to work with. I imagine if you gave him a chance or if you gave him a call, if something comes up, he's going to be receptive to you. And he's been receptive to us and our needs too. And he doesn't have to be. He owns the property. He can do whatever he wants with it within the confines of zoning. And he's been more than willing to assist us with our needs. And we're trying to assist him with his within the confines of the ordinance.
Can you make sure more people are notified when...
We notify people within 300 feet of the property. That's state law.
Yeah, but I mean, like the Marquette residents, would probably be very interested in future planning in other areas. I mean, once it's, once you decide, it's decided. But if you make sure that the community knows about it, then you'll get input.
Well, we want residents from Marquette Township to have opportunities for homes in the area, not the city they can worry about themselves. No, I know what you mean. And yeah, we do put out press releases and things like that when it's time to do that. So there'll be more in the line of newspaper ads and probably some TV stuff rather than just a notification of people within 300 feet of a property. It'll be more broad brush.
Can I ask Mr. Storey a question first? The road that you're, the Fly Ash Road, is that a county road now?
It is a county road now.
Is it a seasonal county? I mean, is it a restricted county road? Are there load restrictions put in place on that road?
It is a Class A road.
Class A, so there are no road restrictions that are included on that?
There are no restrictions on that road.
When the county granted access for the Forestville Road, we used it the last couple of years, at least last year, to go up to Forestville to ski. And I'm just thinking about, you know, I thought they were sort of hoping that that would be another access for like EMS, fire, to get into Forestville because there's only the one road into Forestville. How is that going to impact emergency vehicles when there are these big gravel trucks there?
Man, we've been mining in this area for 100 years. I mean, there's been a lot of activity involving trucks and boats and noise and rail and trains. I mean, that's what our community is founded on. So I don't see that changing at all. And we're very proud and happy to have that hall. I personally am, I can't speak to the planning commission, but to have that road come on the public grid is a real benefit to the community, especially with things that are happening in Forestville with regard to Longyear's proposed development. And having a bleeder access to the north or, you know, MTN, bless their hearts, I mean, they've been running on a shoestring budget for years trying to put together these things for the community. And now we're just that much closer to them with a proper access. So we're hoping that the road commission will eventually, you know, maybe straighten out the hairpin curve on the south side of the bridge and come around with a proper crossing of the tracks and access up to those areas. We know that there's people that are living up in that area year-round that don't have great access, but that's the township. We're a little bit more rural and we don't have as many of the services that a city does. So that's the reason why people want to be here. And I think that that Fly Ash Road provides a great asset to the community now that it's public.
I can't imagine any more trucks than the Eagle Mine trucks. And Jim probably hopes that there's a lot of trucks.
Well, it's not only those trucks. There's more.
Oh, yeah.
Coming from the power plant.
550 pits, yeah.
So I've got some questions I'd like to ask. So Mr. Nickinen was asking, based on your best guess at this point, which direction will the gravel be hauled? Will it be hauled up 550? Will it be hauled down through Marquette?
Right now, if depending on where it is, most everything will go.
South?
South.
Okay.
Through Marquette. Down to Wright Street and then out and around.
Okay.
Is the thought process. If there's a project going to the north on, when they rebuild 550, which I believe they're proposed to rebuild 550 in a year or two, Eagle Mine, I believe, is responsible to rebuild it again if they keep going with the state.
You mean repave it?
Repave it, do something. Then there'll be, I'm sure, I'm going to try selling them gravel. You know, then if that were the case, they'd be going to the north.
Sure.
But I currently don't have anything going north to Big Bay as anything planned, contracts of any sort or anything like that. Anything that I'd have currently would be going south.
Okay, Mr. Nickinen also raised a question about the method of blasting and the concern that residue from whatever explosive mechanisms or devices or material was used could leach into the groundwater or wells. So do you have any knowledge of what type of blasting process that this company that you've hired uses?
Everything they do is within, within the confines of OSHA, HEMSHA and would be any kind of environmental. They're not, I don't believe they're pouring diesel fuel down a hole and setting it off. It's a different, I don't know if it's some kind of, I don't know the exact term of the blasting, but they, they're not allowed to use stuff like that currently anymore.
Well, that raises a question. One of the conditions that were imposed on you when we granted the permit the first time was that you were going to get a storm, condition number two, the applicant should secure a stormwater permit. And number four, a sediment control and solar erosion permit. And I'm not sure whether or not at that time we correctly named the, we may have correctly named the required stormwater management plan. Do you have, have you, have you actually obtained a plan which analyzes where runoff from your property is going to be?
Retained, yes.
Okay.
They came out and looked at the site, walked the site.
Who did?
Whoever the stormwater, they gave us the location, looked at. We looked at the location, we presented it to them. They said, "Yes, that is fine for the stormwater runoff would go to them."
Okay.
So we had them out on, they went out on the site. They look at it, soil and sediment and then stormwater. They look at, essentially any road project you do as well needs to have, if you're within 500 feet of a river, everything you need to have stormwater, soil and sediment.
Okay.
Yeah, these are all regulated by...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because we had an incident or example here where Longyear was supposed to present the stormwater management plan to the planning commission at their first appearance before us. And at the final one, they still didn't have it. So I just wanted to know. And it was raised as a question by one of the public here, members of the public. With respect to Ms. Judy's, Ms. Judy's question, one of the conditions was number six, the reclamation plan should be implemented within two years.
Yeah, because we had, because they had said five years before. And then we had a condition for two years.
Right, it's within two years. Do you have a reclamation plan?
Yeah, you restore that to...
I mean, do you have an actual document that's called a reclamation?
It was all submitted.
It's part of the site plan.
Okay.
But originally at five years.
Okay, so the only change was that we shortened it from five years to two years. Okay, thank you. Another question is, and I guess I wanted to ask Ms. Middleton, you said that you were punting daffodils and all of a sudden the sky was falling. So were there actually rocks raining down on your property?
No, 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 no. I could just hear it.
Okay, you didn't see rocks falling?
No, no. I could just hear it. I could just hear it in the, you know, because we're really not that far.
Okay.
It was just very, you know, you would know if something was falling down from the sky and it wasn't rain.
Okay, I just wanted to know if rocks actually fell on your property.
No, no, I didn't mean that it was falling on our property at all. I could just hear it.
And you've been, you've been in that area for a while, so I want to know, isn't there other gravel pits there? I don't know whether it's Lindberg or Smith that do blasting?
They're
So they're farther away from you, okay.
The only noise we have is from the train.
The train.
Okay, okay.
And it's 200 feet.
All right, so we know that you got a notice because you're within 300 feet of the property. But my question is, and this came up at the last meeting, it's not, how are you within 300 feet of the actual area, the 17 acres that's going to be blasted, used for a blast or gravel pit? Or are you within 300 feet of the perimeter of the property? How far are you from where he's, the 17 acres where he's going to be blasted?
How far would you say that is?
500 feet on the road.
It's close to 500 feet, we measured it.
It's close to 500 feet, it's quite a way.
Yeah, where the actual commencement of the project is about 500 feet besides the entrance road into the project. And when we blast, they fly, we have full footage of everything with the drone, watch everything with the drone. They know what shots went off because it's all state of the art electronically. So they know, yep, they were there, they hit that shot, and they were, said, everything's done, it's all yours. And they leave that fast. I was surprised on how it is. It's pretty, very controlled hen of it. The, you know, the big, the horn, their warning is for people trespassing on the property. And we walk that property outside around it, trying to make sure, because we do, you know, try to keep people from trespassing on it.
How far do you have to be away from the blasting area when the blast takes place?
We're back probably. We're about 100 feet away from the entrance of the road.
So nothing goes up in the air, it just goes boom?
I could show you the video after, if you like, you can watch it, I'll show it to you and you can see, and they control it and they actually direct it. It's very neat. I've never, I mean, we've done blasting in city streets to put in water lines, sewer lines next to a five inch gas main in Manistee. So, but you bring in the right people to do it, and they know what they're doing and they control it. Hence why we use certain people. There's other people that don't really care, they're real cheap, but we don't do that. We go for the best, people that are the best at what they do.
Just from my own identification, are they using like blasting mats? You know, just to cover the blast?
So they drill it?
Yep.
They go down, they drill it, and they put their charge in it, is what they call?
Yep.
They put stone on top of it.
Okay.
And they hold it, and it actually goes down and just fractures and it just goes boom.
Okay, so it's not hurling rocks into the air?
No, if it hurls rocks in the air, that's a bad thing.
Okay, so because I know in the past, they would use matting to hold the rocks down?
If they needed to.
Okay.
Their first, the first time they shot, they were real light because they were nervous because they never blasted the material. That's the scariest, when they did it, they told us the scariest part on initial blast is the first one, because they don't know how the material's going to react. But after the first one, they knew how it would react, they just go and they adjust everything as it is because they want to make it, try to process material even when they're blasting, essentially.
Sure.
If they can, and fracture with it. And make it nice and level, so.
Mr. Storey, so when you do the crushing, that's when the dust
Yes.
is prominent, correct?
That is correct. The EMSHA and regulates, the crushers have to have an air permit that comes with the crusher to regulate the air and the dust control. And the dust control, when the trucks are leaving, talking with Pete Dukes with the Marquette County, eventually we're going to pave the access road in and out to keep dirt coming on to the Fly Ash Road. Right now, it's currently rock. If we continue down the road and, you know, develop it more, we made the initial to go in through his permit, got what they wanted, their 100 foot culvert, and put the road where they wanted it to go in for the most visible sight in and out for people traveling up and down the Fly Ash Road when he was going to open it.
Is it going to be just wholesale sales, or is it going to be retail sales?
I have not gotten that far with it right now. Right now, it is, would be sales out of the area.
So you're going to have a scale there?
We put a scale there.
Okay, I think we've answered all the questions here from everybody, so.
No, I have a couple more.
A couple more?
Yeah. I just want to clarify something, and I guess Jason would be the one to, Mr. Aldorf raised a question about, okay, so why did they purchase so much property? And they're saying that, you know, they're already going to expand, they're only going to focus on 17 acres. He's concerned about, you know, okay, they got, they got their, the camel's got the nose in the tent, and what's going to happen next? But as I understand it, if they wanted to expand this, they would have to come back for another special use permit?
Absolutely. And furthermore, I mean, there's already enough there from what Jim told me for 50 years.
30 million tons.
30 million tons. There's no need to expand it. And what we're hoping is that we can work with Jim and maybe put some of that land into CFR. Or depending upon what your desire is and what the township's desire is, maybe there's other opportunities for other types of development.
For, and I'll note it, if this project is successful for me, my ideal, working with Eagle Mine, Matt Johnson, 906 Club, he initially reached out to me immediately when he found out that we bought it. He was worried about the trails, Lori Halsworth, is to secure that south property, one way or another, so it is permanently left alone, that it cannot do anything. I stated that the first time I was here, and I'll state it again. One way or another, that south of the Fly Ash Road could be this portion of the property I purchased, it came with it. So this is the 120 some acre parcel that was separated off and going here. We're doing our operation currently right here. This was all, basically, part of it was a buffer zone, so I don't have, so I'm not in the neighbors' backyards. But that's where I was going to go in CFR, I paid 10 grand to have it surveyed and done the thing. And they went out there and they found all the hunting blinds and old blinds, people's cars onto that property. The DNR sent me a letter, said clean it up or we will not allow it. I was going to put it in CFR so people could use it. And then I could keep them away from, you know, the mining area, which there's acreage, a lot of difference of it. But the goal is to keep, for me, would be to keep them bike trails in the MTN, access in and out of Marquette, the way it's been, and keep it there. And not, even if I sold it, or anything ever happened on that property, it would be permanently, however it is, is going to go to the trails.
I have one final question, and this is for Mr. Middleton. You said that some engineer came to your house and showed you some report regarding seismic effect on your property, and it was very minimal.
Yes.
Okay, how, what?
Well, we, you know, we're on, we've got rock, but we got sand over rock. So I would imagine, you know, the blast was just absorbed by the sand.
No, what I'm asking you is, were you given some kind of a report, a document documenting the seismic activity so that you were assured that it wasn't going to affect your home, wasn't going to shake your windows, wasn't going to break your, you know?
No, no report. And it was also put in the front of our house, not the back of the house, which actually faces that, which I thought was sort of bizarre, but then they would have, they were already trespassing to be on our property to begin with, so I don't know. They just sort of set it outside our garden fence, and I just happened to look up and I saw this one come in, and two people got out with helmets and...
Did you notice any damage to your home the first time you were blasting? Any breakage of windows, anything like that? Okay. That's it, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Who was the, who was it?
Mike Douglas.
From Marquette, okay, yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're, you know, we're on.
Steve, you have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Do you shut down for the?
Excuse me, excuse me, we're kind of done here now, the public here has been over us, so thank you, Mr. Storey.
Question for Jason, that's somebody brought up, just like every other special use permit, it's something that's reviewed, can be revoked if it's not being followed?
Yeah, ordinance is very performance based. Not only that, but all of the mineral permits that are in, you know, you got Paint and Dolan down by Lake Enchantment, you've got Smith, those are reviewed on an annual basis and renewed, so they will be reviewed annually?
Got other questions answered for everyone? Everybody happy with everything? So if you'd like to, if you have no further questions or comments, can entertain a motion here, if anyone's interested?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit, number 011024-2, for a proposed extraction of earth products to be conducted per Marquette Township zoning ordinance with the additional qualifications that we put in here for that, under new business item 6B.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. First and second, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to say I'm happy with Mr. Storey's approach to this project.
We'll call vote, Steve Hakenan?
Yes.
Ferraro?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
So, congratulations again, I guess. I also apologize to you because I know you had to come back and do this again. And to the residents that came, I recognize some of you from back in the past, so don't be afraid to call if you have any questions. And, you know, hopefully this thing goes smoothly. And, you know, we have some new property that was currently held by, you know, a major utility company that's open, and Mr. Storey has lots of ideas, not only recreationally but commercially too, obviously he's kind of an entrepreneur. But when it does come time to do some planning efforts in the area, I hope that he'll attend a meeting or send an email saying what you believe should happen in the future in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, no unfinished business. Correspondence from the Joint Township Board Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, the
January 24th?
No, it's not, it's February 28th. And we're hoping to shoot for 3:30, I believe. That would be ahead of our meeting, our second meeting in February.
3:30?
If you're available.
3:30? Not 5:30?
I thought it was.
Well, we're thinking a couple hours, so, and then to at least like 4:07.
And what day is that?
It's going to be Wednesday, February 28th.
Okay, I'll have to let you know about that.
Okay.
Ellen just said 4:30 would be okay.
4:30, yeah. We'll hammer it out, just put the date on your calendar ahead of that meeting.
Okay.
A little bit ahead of time. Obviously, there's some things that we're working on as far as property maintenance. Speaking of which, to the residents out in 550, the fire that happened out there, do you happen to know the gentleman? So that, and I hope you don't mind if I just have a quick conversation. So that's like the bane of my existence, okay? That is bad. It's as bad as I've seen. And to be quite honest with you, I've been told to not go on the property by the Sheriff's Department. So we haven't even been able to make contact. And I don't know what good contact will do. I believe I went to high school with the gentleman, but maybe he was a couple of years younger than me. Anyway, we have the ability to work with the county land bank to get that property cleaned up. It would add some value for him. I don't know what the story is, but if any one of you would reach out to me tomorrow or maybe with some contact, do you know if he's still working for Antlers?
Well, he doesn't own it, an ant owns that property.
Well, it was quick claim deeded from his grandma to him.
The one that burnt, right?
Yeah.
There's a female that owns that property.
Okay. Well, there's a couple of properties that we're trying to address. One is out on Lake Enchantment, which was previously, we didn't know about, but there's structures falling down. But we do have the ability to work with the county land bank to get that cleaned up where maybe the property gets, it gets charged, and then when it goes for sale, then whatever the amount of money that was used to clean that up will come off of the sale, right? Okay? So that's kind of the way that would work. Also, the county has money just to do that. So if you could put me in contact with somebody out there, that would be a point of contact for the property, that would be super helpful for me. I would really appreciate that. And I know it would benefit everybody out there. So, thank you, that's all.
So we have, well, we have an opportunity to suggest an agenda for this joint meeting from the planning commission's point of view?
Absolutely.
Yeah, shoot me some ideas. And then correspondence B, we were not successful with the Trailhead project. We maxed out like on the scoring just about, but we don't get points because we're not a metropolitan area, and we're not, our median income in the township is fairly high with some of the suburbs that we have, including Shrobridge Park for that matter. So that was unfortunate. We're discussing whether or not to reapply for it this year. I don't know what other points we can really get to make it competitive. Sometimes it depends on the amount of money that's available from the oil and gas tax pot of money, because that's where, that's what's funding those trust fund projects. The only other thing that we didn't get maxed points on was that they didn't consider it to be a high-end natural resource. So unless somebody can plant some moose out there, a couple barn owls or something like that.
How much, how much were we asking for?
Good point. I think we were only asking for 150,000 with MTN providing like the majority of the match, and then the township board kicked in 10,000.
So the total amount of the grant was only 150,000?
Yeah. So I'll meet with the rec committee next week, and we'll decide whether we put that into the next recreation plan update, or if we maybe try to apply for the grant again. But again, we suffer from a number of things. One is that we've been very successful with that grant program, and they know that. So they know that we've received project money, the tunnel, Schwemburg Park, the Shrobridge Park Recreation Area, some of the improvements there were funded by Recreation Passport and the, you know, the trust fund money, so, yeah, that's all on there.
Do you want to do the township board report, because Linda's not here?
Um, Lynn can do it, I don't really attend those if I don't have to.
I did bring the last agenda, just so I have some good notes. We talked about, we did a letter of support for barrel beam. They want to improve their way of processing their beer. And I forget how many, how many gallons that they use now to clean the barrels, but they can get it down to like five gallons if they do this steam process. So they were looking for a grant, an M-DAR grant, so we wrote a letter of support, and that deadline was yesterday, 5 o'clock. So the board approved that, got that in. And then Monday, we got a request from MTN through Peninsula Solar, because they're doing a project to try to get them better power out there. Apparently, excuse me, they have a lot of power outages. So if they're trying to groom, or if they have the place lit, you know, and the power goes out, they're stuck. People are in the woods and they're stuck. So anyway, they went out for a grant, and I put a letter together Sunday night and gave it to John Kangas, and he sent it out to the board. and gave it to John Kangas, and he sent it out to the board. We got approval, and I was able to get it to him by 5:00 last night. So, those are two good projects that are, you know, beneficial for the township for sure, business and personal. We also scheduled a work session to discuss township policies. We have probably, I think I counted 18 or some ridiculous amount of policies. So, that's March 18th at 1:00, in case you would have an interest on that. And we also renewed our QPAD membership for 24. It was $830 for the year. And I signed this morning a contract where we're expanding our BSNA software abilities, so that takes care of assessing and treasury and paychecks and, gosh, I don't know, everything, pretty much everything. We're actually adding asset management now to it. That's an extra module, so that's going to help the planning department. Sorry, allergies. That was $64,000 to do that whole big upgrade. It's got three modules to it, two plus the planning one. And we're also going to the cloud with it, rather than the servers that we have now, because those were kind of getting old, and we're thinking we might need to upgrade them. So, it was kind of, you know, you're going to make the step, let's do it the full way. And we went with the cloud. So, it's multiple authentication. And then we did talk about the master plan and the transportation plan this year, and crack ceiling went well. And Randy Retary talked at length about all the election stuff. So, if you want to get all the details, watch the Zoom, because it's, he went on and on and on, all the things they're doing for him or to him.
Next one?
Yeah.
Rec committee?
Rec committee will meet next week, and I'll apprise them of the fact that we didn't get the grant and see what direction they want to go, see if they come up with a recommendation out of that meeting.
Is there anybody else in the area that got that grant instead of us? Did it go like, is that how it works?
I haven't, no, because basically all I got was an email. They'll have like a year-end report, and you'll see the communities that did. They usually do news stories on that, too.
Why don't we ask Longyear for 150,000 for that project?
Yeah.
You know, I forgot to ask, Eric. I know that they did meet. I'm not sure what was on the agenda, but I'll make sure that the meeting minutes are in your next packet. Yeah. So, the Michigan State Housing Authority, or MISHDA, Housing Development Authority, they have a pot of money that they are putting out there for grants to assist with affordable housing and consulting. So, I'm going to apply for this grant. It's a zero-match grant, and if we were successful during the time that we're updating our master plan, we could have a consultant come in, up to $50,000 worth, and assist us in that effort. We've also received some correspondence from FEMA and the floodplain determinations that have been made. We have to either amend our current regulations, and we'll have to dig through the books to see what's on the books for the township. And if not, then we'll have to implement a standalone, probably ordinance that would address the floodplain in our area. So, along Lake Superior, essentially, we do have some regulations there. And then the CBA meeting for the appeal of the Longyear PUD Phase 1A is going to be held at 5:00 PM on Thursday, the 25th of January. And that'll be right here in this room.
And what's the gist of that appeal?
The appeal was by property owner Dr. Pesla, appealing whether or not the planning commission went through all of the requirements that you were supposed to as far as review. And then he's indicating, obviously, in a large part of the document that you were provided, that there would eventually be a taking of his property, which he believes that wouldn't be justified by way of a road improvement. Any road improvement there, he believed would be, require some of his property to be taken.
There's no eventuality, it's a possibility, but not eventuality, right?
Well, the only scenario that I'm aware of that would require any additional property would be the roundabout.
Right, right. So, he, there's a, you know, does he have standing when nothing's happened yet?
Well, the thing is, according to, and I don't want to speak too much on to it because it is in the hands of the attorney, but basically, there's, there's no appeal process for a planned unit development.
So, what's the meeting about on the 25th?
It would be about whether or not the ZVA has the jurisdiction to hear the appeal.
Okay.
Otherwise, yes, just go to right circuit court.
That's correct.
So, does the meeting to vote on whether we can hear the appeal or vote?
Yeah, he submitted an appeal on the planning commission's decision, and the ZVA will determine, one, whether or not they have jurisdiction over it, and then, two, if they do, they would listen and, you know, read the findings. And if they don't, then they would just simply state that they don't have jurisdiction to review an appeal on this particular case.
If they find they do have jurisdiction, would they vote that night on it? On what he's asserting?
I think the recommendation was, you know, if, if, if Mr. Pesla was successful in his appeal, then he wanted it to come back to the planning commission.
For reconsideration?
Correct.
Fight number is on there or?
There's five. There. I mean, I got a call today from a broker out of Green Bay, saying he's got companies he wants to bring up and, you know, in the entertainment and restaurant-type format, but he's asking about the Solos property, the former restaurant, Laundromat. That's already in there, so, yeah, there's going to be things cracking. It started early this year, too. And Eric's continuing to work on residential stuff. We've already had a couple of those come through, and business licenses. Keep your busy.
Yeah. Any announcements from anyone? Any more public comment? Can open up for public comment if anyone else has anything to say. Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to share one more thing. And kind of ask Jason what he thinks or what he knows. The, I did a webinar today with MSU, and there's another one that Fahey's going to be doing next week that I signed up for, and MTA's got one on the energy bills that were just passed.
I watched that one, too, today.
Did you?
Yeah.
They're talking about the county having to do a CREEO, compatibility, renewal, energy ordinance. So, I didn't know if you guys had talked about that yet, if you had, just kind of sticking it out there to find out what we have to do. Since we're surrounded by townships in the city, any one of those, we know Sands right now has been working for a couple of years with, I think it's wind. I don't think it's solar. I can't, I can't remember. Is it solar? Okay. So, any one of those, because our borders are so close, I didn't know if, at some point, we could be dragged into it, even if it's, I think they said today, it could be five acres, you know, so even at the Sands border or something. So, I didn't know if you guys had talked about it or if you should. We've got till November to do something. But just as I was leaving, my husband stuck his phone up, and I had already heard about it, but there are a bunch of municipalities and elected officials getting together, and they're either going to sue the state to take back the local control that we seem to be losing or are appearing to lose, or they're going to ask to be have it put on the ballot. So, if it hits in November, according to the meeting today, we have to be ready to have this CREEO in place in case. And I don't know if the county has one either.
What is this?
What's it called?
It's a compatibility renewable energy ordinance.
Yeah, we could talk about it at the next meeting, but essentially, essentially, the governor Whitmer had the energy initiative that you came up with. As a result, wind, solar, and the storage of is basically in the hands of the state now, so it's been taken away from us on utility-grade size developments, not on the residential side. So, the township will have to address that at some point with, you want to have all of the best manager practices in place so that they have to go through and make sure that if there's, something was to come to us, that they would have to jump through all the hoops, even though essentially, you know, the state controls it. But it's, it's brand-new, very detailed. I'll put together a bullet point kind of process for us to work through throughout the year or to get us in place for something at least by summertime. But, yeah, it's all very new, and I had to absorb a lot today. I mean, I was, my head was spinning because of what they were telling me.
When you say utility grade, this would be far and above?
Water, light, and power?
Like 10 megawatts and above.
Okay, so this, this doesn't affect our current ordinance, which has, you know, the homeowner deal and then the larger commercial deal, right?
Yeah, well, it does. Anything above the 10 kilowatt, which is what our ordinance doesn't address. Our ordinance addresses 10 kilowatts and below, which is the residential type component.
But?
So, what we're going to need to do is probably massage our ordinance or do a standalone ordinance that would repeal and replace some things. But like I said, I don't even have enough knowledge on it yet to even speak eloquently about it.
I spoke to Jen Hill on this, about the township. I spoke to Jen Hill about the township's concern, and she said that with the amendments, according to her, with the amendments that were passed, the township still retains control. So, I think there's a matter of debate on this, so I don't know.
You want to be sure of that, if that's the case.
Yeah, I just said, I'm just relaying to you what I was told.
Thank you. I only said that because it appeared from the last time she gave information on it that she was relying on her people or aides to answer the questions instead of having the knowledge firsthand, which I don't, I guess I don't blame her after all, because after hearing what I heard today, it was very difficult to decipher what was what. But everybody's going to have to do the same thing, so we're not, you know, we're not on an island alone. We'll hopefully rely, hopefully the county will take the lead, and the townships can follow suit.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Additional comments by planning commissioners?
Yeah, I've got one. I know we're dealing with some issues with structures that are going to ground collapsing, that kind of stuff. And I know the state of Michigan has an actual, a thing about dangerous buildings, right? Yeah, this line item after, you know, all kinds of subsections, that kind of stuff. The city of Marquette has, has adopted that wholesale. This is what a dangerous building is. Okay? Or a condemned, or a building, anyway, there's a certain statute. Marquette, city of Marquette's adopted it. The Gani Township's adopted it. A number of townships have adopted it, and it's a good-sized document explicit on what's going on there, what has to be done, that kind of stuff. Ours is like a half paragraph about a building that dangerous, it was not even called a dangerous building. I forget what it's called, but it's literally a half a paragraph, and it says that, you know, we can do stuff. I just wonder if that's something we should look at and into expanding into our ordinance as to something like that? You know, because I know that sometimes, you know, if our ordinance has no teeth, I don't see that, does a county have one?
I'd like to get you, I think what you're referring to is the document that you showed me, which was out of our zoning ordinance.
Yes.
We also have a property maintenance ordinance.
Okay.
We also have a blight ordinance.
Okay.
So, we do have some other...
And they, and they deal with buildings that are collapsing?
Substandard.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, as long as, so we got that covered somewhere else, that's fine. But I know in our zoning ordinance, it's just literally just a brief mention.
My frustration, I guess, is with the process. You know, you send a letter saying, please clean this up. They don't do it. You send another letter, we're telling you to clean this up.
Yeah.
They don't. And then you give them a citation, and it goes to court. The judge tells them to clean it up. They still don't clean it up. And it's just, it's a flawed process, and I'm used to, well, when I was in Ashland, Wisconsin, it's a city, it's a little bit different. But we were able to go in there and clean it up, and we would assess that to their taxes. When the building sold, township would get that, or the city would get the money back.
Yeah, well, I don't think, some of these buildings can't be sold. They're going to have to be torn down because they're a danger to people.
Well, they're a danger to people, and they're also...
Which is different than having a junk, you know, pile of junk tires.
Yeah, but they're also reducing property value, and that affects everybody. I, I'm really excited about this master plan version of our update, because I think the property maintenance stuff has been elevated, and I think that's important to people. And I want to make sure that it's expressed in the plan, it's reflected in our ordinances, and then it becomes a way for us and a mechanism. You know, we have these great relationships with the county and Andrew and all of her efforts to get these properties cleaned up. I always said if I was a man of endless money, I would create a 100-acre construction recycling site and just make a killing off because you could resell. Yeah, just resell. You would sort it, right?
Yeah.
But then you would, you can resell a lot of that stuff and, and put it in different areas. But anyway, or burn it or whatever.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we need to get those, those few properties cleaned up, and I'm happy that those people from 5:50 were here tonight. I think they'll come through and give me a contact for that, because that one's a great time. After you have a fire, there was no insurance on that property. It's a time to go in there and, and I don't like to use the big arm of the government, but it's a time for us to act on that. So, thank you. Yeah, we'll double-check that. We'll get that section of the ordinance, and if that's something that needs to be bolstered.
Okay. All right. No, thank you. Oh, yeah, Tech, one to GLI.
What?
Tech, one to Great Lakes Invitational. Just wanted to congratulate.
I did last time, Dave.
That was.
Yes, I have a topic I'd like to...
Did the Bears win anything?
The Bears, they're, once, once, once the fridge retired, you know, they, they lost.
I don't think I was born yet.
Oh, I was in Soldier Field with my feet freezing watching him and Walter Payton. Yeah, you know, we've talked about Renovari project that's upcoming or whatever. It's somewhere there in development. And we're thinking, we were talking about people wanting to own homes. But there's been some studies recently, and I can't remember if it was on the internet or it was a report on TV, that says although homeownership is a goal, American, like apple pie, right? But for many Americans and maybe the majority, homeownership isn't the most economical way to have affordable housing. It's really rental. Rental, renting is what's affordable for our workforce, our, you know, for a lot of people, right? So, I'm thinking that even though this Renovari proposal in its very rough draft form took the form of a PUD with individual homes, owned homes, that I think we should revisit that concept and think about rental as a component of a substantial portion of any development that we would enter into with Renovari. They did, as you have pointed out, Jason, when I bring up the marketplace development that they've done, or they hit now, I guess they're... I guess they're one step closer. They've got the brownfield approval immunity. You've pointed out that that's rental. So your comments started me thinking, well, why not have some rental components in this project that we're going to engage in with Renovari? So in order to achieve that and to avoid a situation where Renovari comes in here with a pre-conceptual plan or a conceptual proposal, and they've already spent a lot of time thinking about, you know, okay, this is the layout. We're going to have forty-eight homes, it's going to be a standard PUD, individual homes, et cetera, et cetera. I think we should, as a planning commission, should take some initiative in reaching out to them. And I know you have, and I'm not criticizing anything you've done. You've, you know, got the ball rolling with them. But I think it's important that we sit down with them, either by in person or by Zoom or whatever, to talk about some ideas, some alternative ideas, okay? And what, what suggestions might any of the planning commissioners here have, or you as the community planner or planning administrator have? Because it's, it's a nice piece of property and it's, it's, it could be a really a model of what we can achieve as a township for our people here for affordable housing. So I'm suggesting that at the next meeting, we place on the agenda a discussion and perhaps a vote on whether the planning commission should appoint an advisory committee made up of perhaps two planning commissioners, either you or Eric. And we could even, according to the Enabling Act, we could even appoint someone who's not on the planning commission and have this, this advisory committee meet, and we could do it by Zoom, meet with Renovari prior to the time they come in here with all their slides and whatever they're going to propose us to do. And just hash out some ideas and just engage and see what, because obviously they, they can do this. They can make affordable units rent for rental purposes. Let's, let's knock around some ideas. So my suggestion, and I guess it's a request, is that at the next meeting of this commission, we have an agenda item, a discussion of this topic of appointing an advisory committee to then engage with Renovari for the purposes of just, you know, sharing ideas, getting information. I'm quiet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
It's good enough for me.
Yeah. I guess I kind of. It's what Renovari is the most afraid of right now. They come to us, we, we went to them, say, hey, we got this piece of property, we need some housing. And they're like, all right, let's see if we can make that work. They put forty-eight units on the lot. And yeah, it's not perfect. But now we say, no, we don't want that. We want a mixed use. We want, we want retail, an office on the first floor, an office on the second, residential on the third. That's what drives developers away.
Yeah, but you know.
Can you speak to that, Bethany, at all? And I mean, if they purchase the property, Denny, and they put something that complies with zoning on it, you shall approve it?
It depends if it's in, we, we, you know, we are not legislators.
But we, yeah, we talk about exaction, but I think that, you know, exacting the economic viability of a property is tricky territory.
I know, but we're, we're in such a preliminary stage with them.
Right.
That I think that we would be doing not only ourselves a disfavor by not engaging and sharing ideas at this point, but doing them a disfavor because all we know is when you reached out to them, they came back with this preliminary proposal and a, you know, a PUD plot plan that you could probably put together on Canva yourself. And it was just as a, as a preliminary concept. And I don't think, you know, and that's been, I don't know, I think it was what, in the spring of last year that we entered into this preliminary, you know, whatever it is, this option to purchase. But it's been over, it's almost been two years since we originally reached out to them and they sent us this, this just preliminary concept of proposal. So I, I think it's, there's, there's fluidity there. Nothing's set in stone at this point. But if you wait until they schedule a formal meeting with our planning commission to give us a conceptual point of view as to what they want, well, you know, by that point, you know, the, the concrete is not set, but it's, it's getting there.
But, but it's what we asked them for.
Oh, no, because I specifically asked you, and I asked this commission, and I asked you to be sure when the, when we entered, when the township entered into this option to purchase, that this did not in any way bind us to accept what their plan was for this PUD. And I was assured that it didn't.
Well, no, it's a residential development in nature.
Right, and it could be residential with part home ownership, with part apartments that could be affordable to our young people that are working here, people that have to work at Jim's Restaurant, that have, that leave because they can't afford to stay in the township or even, you know, I mean, I just think, we don't have any delus by it. And I think they, they're not going to be, you know, how do we know? What, how do we know what they're willing to do if we don't sit down and talk to them?
Yeah, so the PUD process covers that. If you refer to Section thirteen oh four, Pre-Application Conference under sub A, it says, prior to the submission of an application for a PUD, a pre-application conference shall be held with representatives from Marquette Township. Denny, you're welcome to attend for the purpose of exchanging information, providing guidance to the applicant, and determining the eligibility of the request for consideration as a PUD.
I know, and we did that with, with Longyear. And Longyear came in and presented, had all kinds of drawings all, all around the wall about what they were going to do. They did a beautiful job of giving us a proposal that essentially was what the subsequent first preliminary approval session was with us. And then essentially was the same thing that was the final approval. So there, they didn't change anything. We had no input into what their plan was, what it was going to look like. Because we just sat here and went through the process by the, what's in the ordinance. And I'm not arguing what's in the ordinance. That's great. It's good to have that pre-conceptual planning thing. I'm suggesting something different. I'm suggesting that before we have that pre-conceptual thing where they get all their, you know, ducks in a row and come in here, let's talk to them first and say, hey, what, you know, here's some ideas. What do you think about this? What do you think about some rental units, instead of just?
You're welcome to email them if you like.
Oh, I didn't see that while I was going through you.
Well, I mean, you can send me questions that you have for them.
I don't want to, I didn't want to overstep any bounds here about, you know, infringing on, you know, overstepping.
Well, if you have questions about.
Well, that's why I want an advisory committee. We can have, I don't even need to be on it. It could be.
Oh, no.
It could be, okay, I will. I'll volunteer. I'll be one of the persons on it. But it could be a thing where, it could be informal. I think if you have two representatives of the planning commission, which is far less than a quorum, I don't think you have to have, it's not subject to the Open Meetings Act. We could check that with Roger, okay? And we just have some discussions, which is just preliminary, you know, okay, sharing ideas. Maybe they, they, oh, yeah, okay, we can do that. I mean, they did it in munising and it was all rentals. Why can't we have some component of rentals here as well? That's all I'm saying. And I just was thinking of, you know, let's have a little subgroup of our group here parlay with them a little bit.
I don't agree with that. I'd rather not do that, Denny. I disagree with you. I don't think that's up to us to start telling them what they should do with their development. That's just the way I feel about it. And we don't have people banging at the door for that lot and we finally find somebody and it feels like we're just going to drive them away by putting all these other conditions on them and who's going to develop it if they don't? Then it's going to sit there empty. Something's better than nothing, in my opinion. And by you telling someone that wants to invest millions of dollars in this, that you don't like this or like that, if that was me doing it, I'd say, all right, I'm going somewhere else.
That's what happened in the city.
And I, I don't think it's up to us to tell them what they should be doing with their money. And as long as they meet all the ordinances and build something there, it's better than nothing there.
But there's still going to be other opportunities for the planning commission to have these discussions.
Well, why don't they have, why don't they have a little advanced discussion with them? Because as far as I'm concerned, what they proposed, which was a single family units, the smallest unit was eleven hundred square feet. What's the market price for eleven hundred square feet now?
It's not up to us what the market price is.
I'm, I wasn't.
It's a land use issue.
I understand, but we also have a problem here of affordable housing. We also have a master plan and you and I can argue about it. I, at, when I made my objections to Longyear, I cited chapter and verse from the master plan and how it ties in with Section thirteen oh four and why I didn't think that they were meeting the qualifications of thirteen oh four and the master plan by providing for the health and welfare of our citizens here in the township. Okay, that's my opinion. Okay, now, what? I'm not telling, you know, I'm not trying to say what their market price should be for anything. All I'm trying to do is, they can just make just as much money. In fact, Longyear could have, Longyear, instead of making a fifteen hundred square foot unit, they could, they could have divided and done two duplexes of seven hundred and fifty square feet, okay? They'd have made just as much money and it'd be saved footprint, right? But no, because by the time they got to us, they had already put a lot of money and a lot of energy into developing this. I don't, based on what I've seen from documents you shared with Renovari with us, and that's been over almost two years ago, all they did was, they just generated a proposal. They're not, I don't, I, I would be surprised if they're set in stone. I mean, it took them, right now, they just got the brown, brownfield approval for the thing in munising. These things stretch over a long period of time. I don't think they're anywhere near, you know, you know, saying, this is exactly what we want, okay?
They haven't even submitted an application.
I know, and all I'm trying to say is, what's wrong with us as a planning commission doing some planning, suggesting some things, suggesting some?
You, you have that opportunity through the.
I, I understand that, but, but if, I guess, maybe I'm not communicating. It was my impression that by the time that that pre-conceptual meeting occurred here with Longyear, it's the same. I, I threw away all those documents, but because they were clearing up my, my house, but they were all the same. They were the same from the pre-conceptual meeting to the first preliminary hearing to the final hearing. Nothing really changed, except they reduced the plan from whatever, two hundred and thirty-four units to one hundred because of the road thing. But everything else was the same.
They still had all the conditions, though, that we voted on, as far as I'm concerned, and we voted on it.
We didn't vote on it. We didn't vote on Renovari.
Longyear I'm talking about.
Oh, I know. I'm talking about, we, well, but I'm saying, we didn't, we didn't do anything with, 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 with Renovari.
You're talking about Longyear when Longyear came in and, you know, they, they gave us what we needed to vote on. And as far as I'm concerned, we, they met everything that I felt should be met. So that's why I voted on it and, well, you think differently about it.
Well, no, but we didn't have any, we didn't have any input into the planning of that.
I don't think we should.
I disagree with you completely. I think we're a planning commission.
We don't plan other people's, other businesses' projects.
You did have input, though, during the preliminary. You, you made the same comments to Longyear that you would make to Renovari about affordability or why don't you do this? You could build it smaller and sell it for this amount of money. You, you made those comments.
I know, and I'd like, I'd like to be able to, I believe that Renovari, you know, we, we owe them a certain degree of respect too. And by, if, if, because if they're going to come and present the same thing that they presented with the same concepts that were in that document that we received two years ago, I have a hard time seeing how that's going to be affordable housing, okay? And I would not vote for it.
So there's other things that they're putting together besides like what you're going to pay for a house? And some of it has to do with down payment assistance?
But why make that be a surprise to us when they come for the pre-conceptual meeting? Why don't we try to find that out ahead of time by just engaging with them?
Because they're still putting together their, their plan. They're, they're not.
I know, that's what I'm saying. They're putting together their plan. Now's the time for us to have some input into them putting together their plan.
And what would your input be, Denny? What are you going to tell them?
I would say, okay, look, you're talking about affordable housing here. Why don't you create some smaller units? And if you want to stick to the homeownership thing, then have a studio condo, okay?
I'd say, I'd say thank you for your input.
All right, or, or have a studio apartment.
Right.
Okay, have, have, you know, of these forty-eight units, have thirty of them be houses, individual houses, and have eighteen of them be rental units.
I think we've already conveyed that to them. I think we've already conveyed those comments to them.
No, no, there was no discussion of rental units and there was.
No, you asked me to convey.
I know, and your discussion and your communication to them was, was building smaller houses, but they were like, I think a thousand square feet or something like that. We didn't talk about smaller units that, which the market would drive the price for. I'm not trying to tell anybody what the price should be, but if you have a certain size of a unit, then the market drives the price for that unit, whether it's for sale as a home or whether it's for rent as an apartment. That's all. Just, I don't see what we're afraid of about engaging with them.
Yeah, I'm not afraid of anything, really, other than spooking them and scaring them away.
Exactly. I agree with you a hundred percent, Jason.
Jason, can I add something? Two things. One of the meetings I went to in Esconaba that CAM and QPAD are jointly managing for this housing consortium or whatever you want to call it, that's working with MISTDA. Shannon was there, I think that's her name, right, New Yorker woman, and she came over and we talked a little bit before the session.
She from Renovari?
Yes, she's one of the partners. And I brought that up to her about the rental portion of it. We talked about it a little bit. To preface that, you can't compare them to Longyear because they're not a conventional developer. They have no money in the game. They don't invest any of their own money. This is all through grants or loans or working with the land bank. So there isn't, it isn't the same. The money that they have to go for has to be specific through the state, federal government, that's their two primary funding sources, to meet specific criteria. They didn't want to go with the rental option because they don't want to be a part of this. They want to build it, sell it, get rid of it. That's the conditions of how they're getting their funding. And again, they don't put any of their money in, you know, if Longyear wants to take the suggestion of doing something different, they can. They can do what they want. But these guys are a little bit different. And part of the reason that we haven't gotten anything, as far as I know, is because the option to purchase doesn't expire until April. They had asked for a June extension. They, they contacted us in April, the board in April, and said, we'd like to do this one year thing. And we said, okay. Well, finally in June, somebody got ahold of them and said, are we going to do this or what? And they said, okay. Bang, they sent Federal Express or whatever it was, Next Day Air, the document, and it had June on it. And I brought it to the board and I said, I don't think we should do June. We started this in April. And I brought it to the board and I said, I don't think we should do June. We started this in April. If they want two more months, then write it into the agreement. So, the board said, no, we're gonna change it to April. So, we signed it, sent it off to them. We haven't heard, we haven't heard a word. Now, if Jason's talked to them, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, they, they had indicated that they were gonna submit their PUD or set up that meeting, um, during the month of January.
Okay. But their funding is different. They're a little bit more restricted.
Well, that's to hit that, that median income that they're, or the, the income range that they're trying to hit. They have to hit those parameters, so-
Right. Well, they're doing, they're, 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 this marketplace that they're doing in munising-
That's different. That's what I asked her about.
It's a rental.
That, that's different. This project, they don't wanna be involved with rentals, maybe because it took them five years to get to this point. It's been over five years. I talked to the city manager.
Well, how about, did, did you discuss with them, uh, how about creating something like, uh, smaller condos? Like, have a, a, a four hundred and fifty square foot, a studio condo that would be-
No, I didn't. I was asking about the rental.
Well, I, so, all I'm saying is, this is an idea that if they say, no way, we're not gonna do it, this is what it's gonna be, whatever, fine. Maybe they would. Maybe they'd say, oh, well, maybe we could do that.
And you'll have that opportunity to discuss that.
I understand that. My God, I told, I get the, I get the sequence. I get the one, two, three. All I'm saying is, I wanna do, uh, uh, pre-one, pre-two, pre-three. I wanna get ahead, just at least one meeting ahead of time, so we could share these ideas. And then when they come for the pre-conceptual meeting, maybe we'd have some little more things to talk about. That's all.
Why don't, why don't you just set up a meeting yourself with them and talk to them?
Okay. If, I have your permission?
Yeah.
Alright, great. I'll call Joe-
Not from, coming from a planning commission, but just from yourself personally.
I'll tell Joe Ferrari that she should change her, the V on her last name to a N. And maybe we're relieved.
I like Ferraris a lot more than Ferraro.
Yeah, I, I know you do, even if I was a car. Alright, I'm shutting up.
Can I get in one quick thing?
For?
Jason mentioned it, uh, about a recycle center. Even though I spent thirty years in Delta County, uh, they do have a recycle center. It's kinda like a pole building you drive through. You got a bin for glass, for aluminum, for, um, toxic waste. So, it doesn't end up in the landfill. It really cuts down on the landfill. And, um, our garbage pickup was once a month because we, we recycle and we just bring stuff through there.
Yeah, there's other communities that are light years ahead. I mean, in Market, uh, County anyway, we have the Solid Waste Management Authority, who we rely on for leadership in those categories.
Yeah, they, everybody piles their garbage in one big pile. It goes in one truck and it's, uh, every week. You can reduce it to once a week by recycling and, and, um, recycle center would make money on it.
Yeah.
It hasn't Delta County does, so it's not like it hasn't been done. Market County is nine times when it comes to recycling.
Yeah. I always beat up everybody here because I worked in Ashland, Wisconsin. And anybody in Ashland at the time that was serving a cafeteria-style meal, so all your schools, your hospital, the old people's home, they were all getting all of their vegetables and fruit, well, not fruits, but from a fifty-mile radius, which is crazy cool. Um, but yeah, we're just-
Then, then for the homeowner, it's ten bucks a month instead of twenty-five bucks a month. Cause you don't have to be putting a big pile of garbage out every, every week. And then when, when the landfill gets full, then that's gonna be another big expense.
Yep. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Nicken.
But I gotta go, so I-
Surprised you stayed this long.
Yeah, me too. But I'm retired, so what do I got?
Well, thank you, sir.
Join the club.
Thank you.
I had something just really quick. Um, I had gotten in the mail, uh, pamphlet with, like, continuing ed courses or something. Um, it was in Grayling for some zoning development planning that I'm kinda interested in, so I'll just talk to you guys, like, afterwards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be an email and we'll set that up through, uh, Kim.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was a course on getting the development that you want. Yeah, it would be interesting.
We can set the Zoom ones up ourselves, though, right? We don't need to have-
Yeah, it's gonna be in person in Grayling, over by Gaylord.
Somewhere, somewhere around here.
Or south of Gaylord.
Alright. I don't have anything either, so, meeting adjourned.
Okay, done.
I'm tired. Tired, tired, tired.